Evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the June 26th, 2024 Board Meeting. I'll begin this evening by asking each Commissioner to please respond with a "here" when I call out their name. Commissioner Doe?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
And Commissioner?
License.
Here.
Wonderful. We'll begin by asking for our reports from the CEO and management staff.
Evening, President Sanders, Commissioners. It'll be a very brief CEO report tonight. I want to hit a couple of topics, and then I'll turn it over to our CFO to deliver the Director's Report for the district this month. Speaking of finance, I wanted to highlight, you probably saw this in the Thursday memo, that the district did receive its distinguished budget presentation award. I highlight that maybe as a matter of personal pride, this was the last budget that I was the budget officer on, so I've now moved on and a little nostalgia there. But we did get that. It's important for us, it's actually based on some objective criteria that are evaluated by independent reviewers around the country. We don't know who the reviewers are, but they take a fair amount of time. They go through our budget in detail, and they provide comments. The GFOA standard for the award also provides standards for us to model our budget after, to make sure that it meets the needs of our community. But some of the most important aspects of it are the comments we get back from the reviewers themselves. It allows us to engage in continuous improvement in our budget document. And over the years since I've been at the district, we have valued those comments and incorporated them into the budget each year. And in fact, we provide the GFOA reviewers a status report on the application of their comments during each, by anybody should say, rather than each year. So it's important for us. We're proud of it, but it's a great tool that we have to continue to improve our budget process. And we do something very similar with the annual conference of financial report. Hopefully, we'll hear about that shortly as well. The other update I wanted to give you is on the 189th Avenue pump station. We ran into some difficulties there, some hardware issues, and that was also communicated in Thursday memo. Ended up with one of the pump motors needing to be replaced. We actually replaced two pump motors. And one of the replaced pump motors, we're actually going to put in inventory for future emergencies, so we have a little bit of flexibility there. Final testing and calibration will be completed tomorrow, Thursday. The Kimmer Road Intertie, which we have with the city of Beaverton, could be accessed quickly if needed to be. But the action that our operators have taken have avoided the need to actually implement that measure. But that's why that Kimmer Road Intertie was so important, to increase the reliability of our water system. Importantly, throughout this entire challenge that we had, our number of customers were affected by the outage. So there's been no customer impact, even though our operators had quite an impact to make sure that that occurred. We're obviously in the process of building a new 189th Avenue pump station, and so this is a period of time that we're working carefully to keep that in good place. With that, I'll turn it over to our CFO, Justin Carlton, who will be presenting tonight's Director's Report.
President Sanders, Commissioners, it is my privilege tonight to provide an update on the financing status for the WWSS. This feels like kind of a 12-leg relay race, and I picked up the baton at like the ninth or 10th leg. So really appreciative of all the hard work that's gone into getting us to this point. But just to take a step back and look at kind of what's been needed, or what's the problem we had to solve for with the WWSS financing? And so the district's share of the funding expenditures for the WWSP was $969 million. So when I say WWSP, I'm referring to the investment in the WWSS as well as the investment in the MPE Pipeline. So the two projects together are WWSP. And you can see the spending curve over time here is presented. The next slide here is the sources of funds as we progressed through 2022. So primarily cash investments, funding the expenditures until we get to 2022. In 2020, we did secure the WIFIA loan, but the market was such that it wasn't advantageous for us to draw on that loan yet. So we were continuing to essentially cash fund our investment in the WWSS until 2022. And then something happened in the market where all of a sudden it became really advantageous for us to get those proceeds from the WIFIA. So we had this accumulation of about $100 million ready for us to access. And it became apparent that by accessing those funds at the lowest rate that was offered to us for WIFIA, we could reinvest those proceeds and actually earn money on it. So we started executing that plan in 2022 to the tune of $103 million. And then going forward in 2023, we had additional $140 million. In the end of 2023, we issued our Series 2023 Revenue Bonds, which grossed us $82 million. And then we completed our WIFIA proceeds of $144 million. So all the WIFIA proceeds were brought in and were accounted for as project expenditures. So now we're on the cusp of 2025 for our own sense of purposes, and five days will be in 2025. What does the picture look like going forward? So we just issued our Series 2024 Revenue Bonds for about $100 million. And then the rest will come from cash and investments that the district's been making over time. So you can see in the years where we had proceeds that were significantly larger than the expenditures, that money has been invested and secured for our remaining investments in the program from '25, '26, and '27. You may recall, this is a tool that we use to try and match our investments with our funding needs. So the program provides updates every single month on what we anticipate the expenditures to be on a monthly basis. And so we review our existing portfolio and try to align the maturities of our investments. So we look for, obviously, safe maturities, but things that provide a good return on our investment. And then we try to align those with the cash flow needs that are provided from the program. In summary, where we're at, we have our 2020 bonds, which is, that's the WIFIA proceeds, $387 million, our 2023 bonds for $82 million, and our 2024 bonds of $100 million, and then other resources coming in at approximately $400 million. So the total $969 million is fully funded at this point. And then how that breaks up in terms of our investment, the WWSS at $118 million, and then the Metzger Pipeline at $151 million. So we went from $0 in debt to $570 million in debt in four years. It seems like a very rapid ascension. It's a very long-term process, actually. Looking back at our rate increases over time, you can see kind of the trajectory early on in the program. We got things up pretty significantly. There was a period where things cooled off. And then going forward with the last two-year rate increases of 22 and 17.5% that were adopted in this last budget cycle. But what I want to draw attention to is the projected rate increases going forward, sitting at around 3.5%. So we oftentimes refer to this as trying to climb this really, really steep hill. And once we get over the other side of the hill, then now it's time we can glide in for the smooth transition. So barring any significant unknown risks, and Dave assures me that everything's on track, we're in a good position to be able to fund all the expenditures as well as maintain the trajectory of rates that we've been communicating in the future. So it's not lost on us what that impact is to our customers. So you can see here where the typical bill has changed over time from 10 years ago at around $30. These are normalized for a monthly basis to now almost, with our 2024 increase, the impact would be about $100. So essentially tripling what a typical customer would spend on water in a given month over the last 10 years. So pretty significant increases, but those increases are going to fund something that's even more, say, even more valuable in terms of the long-term value that they'll get for that investment. So I'm proud to say that we're at the point now where we're in a good position. We're on the glide path, and things are stabilized, but obviously it took a lot of work to get there. So any questions that I can answer for you this time?
Can you go back one slide, please? So I kind of remember last fall having a major discussion about rates, what we would do in November of last year and what was likely for November of this year. I don't remember the blue triangles.
Oh. So Justin, you want to talk about the blue triangles and the forecast?
Those are projected rate increases. Obviously, those are not adopted. So that's what we're anticipating in our financial modeling after the two adopted rate increases that went into effect November 1st of 2023, and then will go into effect November 1st of 2024. So November '25, '26, '27, what we're currently adjusting and is, you know, not to be the exact number, but something along the lines of an inflationary adjustment going forward.
Am I wrong in thinking that we were talking about 7% in '25?
Yeah.
I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was '26.
Excellent.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
Thank you. Groovy. Wow, that makes us really smart.
Yeah, there were a lot of rate increases, and the thing that Justin may not, I don't think you pointed out was, you know, as part of issuing that last Ruben Bond, we got our, was probably our final bond issue that we're going to do in at least my lifetime, AA+ from Fitch and S&amp;P, which was our plan all along. So we've navigated this, and I think the board, your support of the rate increases and the financial policies of the district is crucial to achieving that outcome. As we looked at that years ago, that was the sweet spot, that we wanted to maintain that AA+ credit rating. And frankly, that's been a target. We've been working towards that. We have the criteria from Fitch and S&amp;P, and we've made sure that our financial plans align with that. And every one of those rate increases was a political challenge for y'all to do, but the benefit now is for our customers and having the lower cost of capital. So this is an exciting time. Dave's got a lot of work to do, but Justin's in coast move, right? Is that what you said?
That term, yeah.
Wow.
Soft landing.
Financial planning gets significantly easier. That's great.
Yeah, what we're going to be doing as a finance team for the next 10 years is very different than what we've been doing for the last years. It's a pretty exciting time. As I said, I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to kind of take over the reins at this stage where a lot of difficult actions got executed, challenges got overcome, and now we're in a position to really focus on delivering value going forwards.
Well, it'd be good to recognize the senior leadership on the board who used their voices to insist on those increases so that the next couple of years, your job is very easy.
Yes, very appreciative of it.
Leadership who made some very important comments at that critical times.
Very, the consistency of the support, and we look at some of our neighbors that are going through a little bit further east of us, and the challenges that they're having, largely they don't have the political support. And what our board did is they gave us a clear vision of what they wanted, the Willamette, a new water supply. And we got excellent folks like Dave and his team put together to do the construction and to do the planning and design to give us that cost estimate. And then you supported, you know, there's one thing to will the end without willing the means, but y'all were there, and that is apparent when we have our conversations with reading agencies. And it's a significant part of our success, or so. Thank you for that support. Yep. We've been consistent, and it's been over a number of years.
Thank you for giving us a program that we can support.
Mr. Craster?
Question or comments?
Well, that concludes the CEO Announcements Report. Management staff, thank you, President Sanders.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening are the Commissioner Communications, and we will now report on recent meetings attended. We'll begin with Commissioner Doe, sir. Commissioner Doe?
I need to be apathetic. Okay, regular meeting on the 26th. That's tonight. Work session on the 4th, the Schmidt Building Dedication on May 21st, and the Retired Executives Get Together on 19th. That's, that was it?
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Commissioner Duggan?
All right. I have a couple of same things. On the May 16th, we had the Leadership Luncheon. On the 21st, the Dick Schmidt Florida Facility Dedication. On May 22nd, I attended Metro Impact, where housing and UGB expansion, your Sherwood, were discussed. On the 24th, we had our work session where we discussed the CEO Performance Criteria. On June 6th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Construction Board Meeting, where we had elections and our regular updates. On June 6th, we had a WWS Board Meeting and Executive Session, our very first in-person meeting since the start of the pandemic. And we also got a water treatment plant tour that was well-attended and very, very satisfying to see the amount of progress that's taken place on construction of the water treatment plant. On the 11th, I attended the Washington County CPO Number One Meeting, where they talked about middle housing and land use and development issues. Last Tuesday, the 18th, I attended the CCI Meeting for Washington County, that's the Committee for Citizen Involvement, where Chair Catherine Harrington spoke about the 30-year facility plan for the county. Top on their list is constructing a new and expanded jail. It sounds like that is a facility that's needed attention for quite some time. And then tonight's meetings. That's it for the last month.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher?
Well, on the 16th of May, I also attended the Leadership Lunch with former TBWD leadership folks. On the 23rd of May, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Mayor's Forum to hear updates from the region's mayors. On the 28th of May, I attended the SDAO Breakfast Meeting for metro-area SDAO members to hear about what they accomplished in the short session. On the 1st of June, I attended a constituent coffee with Representative Courtney Neuron. On the 3rd of June, I attended the Schmidt Open House to get a look at the new facilities and meet constituents and neighbors. On the 4th, I attended our work session. On the 5th, I attended the Helm, Graber, Lieber Town Hall to hear what was accomplished from their perspective on the short session. And then on the, where is it? I attended tonight's meeting on, for the Board Meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner License?
All of mine have been discussed already, so the luncheon on the 16th, on May 16th, the dedication ceremony on May 21st, the work session on June 4th, and the meeting tonight.
I can say if I can to drop the floor. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. And then, License, sorry. And then finally for myself, everybody's heard, spoken about all the things, the only thing I have to add was the June 11th, was that the right date for the, yeah, Agenda Plan and Meeting? And then that afternoon, I also attended the Willamette River Water Coalition Meeting with our water rights partners. And while there wasn't a whole lot of updates to be done there, our next meeting, there will be a big summary on the water rights certification process that is underway for us, ourselves, and all the members of, is it proper to say of the WIF?
No, WRWC.
But the members of WIF are all trying to achieve certification? Is that right? This is a bigger question. I shouldn't even, I shouldn't even open that word.
Well, but I think I didn't attend the meeting either. My understanding was is that we're talking about our certification strategy. Well, even though Pete attended, I'm going to speak for him.
It was Justin, actually, because I had another commitment that night.
All right, then we'll let Justin talk, and then I'll contradict him anyway.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact specifics, but essentially, WIF partners and WRWC partners are all working in coordination to certification, because just wanted to take it.
I mean, for the WIF, it's crucial that we have a certification strategy for all the partners. And the WRWC is a shared right, as you know. And so, one, there's the certification strategy within that right, but then it's how we interface with those others, how the WIF is used and all that. So it's a bigger project, and one that requires a lot of coordination. And I think we retain GSI to do that work, and it's going to be crucial to us. And they've been doing, GSI's been doing this work up and down the state, notably right now, down for the Medford Water Commission as well, that has a lot of shared rights at the same intake for Medford Water Commission. And so they're trying to sort out how they pursue that strategy. So it's, you have the best consultants available to help you develop them.
That I understood, yes. The manager for the order of GSI is supposedly very good. So if I'm speaking right, then the folks that are under this certification discussion are TVWD, Sherwood, and Tigerd. Is Toowallaton also seeking some level of certification, even though they don't use any water at this time?
No.
We have a charter prohibition against using the water, so I can't imagine they...
The rights will be certified, you know, you, some municipalities have the provision of, they don't have to show full use to get a certificate, they have to show 25% of the total water right. So part of the WRWC certification strategy is going to be, you know, having our large right certified on the 25% rule. But then how we allocate it between us is an internal thing. The certification at the state level is for the water, the single water right itself.
Okay.
So that's why it's crucial for us. So for example, Sherwood right now, even though it's been using, can't, couldn't certify on the 25% rule because they just don't have enough use to get there. As soon as we come online, we are probably closer to 50% of that right, at least in the 40s. So we'll easily be able to immediately certify, when Dave flips the switches, we'll immediately be able to certify a pretty decent chunk of our water right. And that's going to put us in a much, in an enhanced position for all sorts of regulatory issues.
So, my fellow board members, water rights is crazy.
Yeah.
That is a complex issue, to say the least.
Here's like whole classes I did not take.
Yeah.
You heard there's actually certifications.
And I did look, Lewis and Clark does have an entire program just for water rights in their law school. And you can't just go take them. You actually already have to be a lawyer to take those courses, or ever have a JD.
I have a JD. That's just my initials, so.
Well, we have two JDS.
We both have JD.
Yeah. So with that, that was what our, our next meeting for the Willamette River Water Coalition will be very interesting as we move forward with those regards. All right, that taken care of, then. Next item up is topics to be raised by Commissioners. Do we have any topics to be raised? I have one, and other than that, so while we're here in this section of the agenda, I would like to move or ask for a move in a second, that staff pursue negotiations for the property discussed in the executive session and report back to the board. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, then we direct our staff to pursue as we discussed. All right, thank you very much. Next item is public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment, either here or virtually?
Not seeing any.
Not seeing any, then we will move on then for our next agenda item, and that is our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be acted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for some, consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we have three items, and they are, as you can see in front of us, to approve the May 15th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, the June 4th, 2024 work session meeting minutes, and to adopt Resolution 13-24, the Chief Executive Officer Evaluation Criteria. Is there a motion and a second?
Still moving?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion passes. We'll move on to the next item this evening, which is our business agenda. And the first item on our business agenda is a presentation on the North Plains Intergovernmental Agreement by Pete Boone, our Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, President Sanders and Commissioners. So yeah, I'll be walking you through an agreement that we are hoping to enter with the city of North Plains, and I'll talk a little bit about the history of that. We've actually been working out there and helping them for about a year and a half now. I'll talk about what we've been doing and how this fits within TBWD's recently adopted regional principles. So I apologize for some verbose slides. I went into this thinking I was going to have one slide and just kind of tell a story, and the more I worked, the more I added to my slides, and they're, they're pretty texty, but it helps tell the story. So the city of North Plains reached out to us about a year and a half ago, and they were in a pickle because they had had a longtime staff member retire who had done a lot of things for the city. He was their public works director. He held all of their certifications that were required to run their water system and some of the other things they had to do, and they were having a hard time refilling that role with someone who was qualified, especially to be their direct responsible charge or DRC. And the DRC is something that's mandated by the state. Every public water system has to have one. And depending on the complexity of your system, it mandates that level of certification that you need to have in this role. And they didn't have anyone on staff, and they were having a hard time bringing someone in to do this. So they asked us if we would serve that role for them. And we, you know, we quickly responded, yes, we want to help you, and here's what it's going to take for that to be a successful relationship. We need to have a decent level of involvement with the operation of your water system so that, so that we can certify that it's all being done properly. So we crafted an agreement, mostly verbally, to just get that started. They needed to have someone on file with the state. And we've been working with them with a few gaps in there to just formalize this, and that's what we're doing tonight with that IGA. So like I said, this started in November of '22. We have similar arrangements with other cities and neighboring districts, and you've heard about some of those. And so initially, we were going to use that same template, which was a memorandum of understanding. But as we further developed that, the city expressed their desire for this to be an IGA instead. So that's, that's what we did to pivot here. So, and just to clarify, so a couple of things. So the city has continued to operate their own water system with our help. We're not out there all the time, right? So they've got staff that are qualified to do that, and they're doing a really good job. We've been helping them with a lot of things. That, that help was at a higher level of effort initially than it is now. We helped them get a lot of things squared away, and now it's running very smoothly out there. And they intend to bring this DRC role back in house. They've been clear about that all along. And they've got a particular staff member who's working his way through that certification process. And when that person is ready to take the reins back, like they said, or I said, they've told us they intend to do that, although we will still remain there in a support role. And this IGA gives us that flexibility to make those adjustments as the needs change. So what are we doing for them? Obviously, the DRC piece, and with that comes a lot of technical support on operational decision-making, you know, making adjustments in their system, you know, just helping them think through those things. We go out there from time to time and provide labor, equipment, material to get some of this work done. We've done some planning. We've done some plan review as, as they have engineering plans for development come through the city and even helped them with some construction inspection. And we've been out there to help them fix leaks just like occur in our system. And a variety of, of different things is certainly not an exhaustive list. But I wanted to touch on our regional principles in, in this, and we didn't have these at the time that, that North Plains reached out to us. But really, this is kind of how we've always looked at these things, you know. From the mutual aid perspective, that's, that's what this is, although it's not mutual aid. And in the same sense, this is more of a fee-based service, but they needed our help, and, and we've got the resources to, to be able to provide that. Obviously, we, we were in a timely manner, you know, when they asked for help, we got out there very quickly. And then the, the threshold criteria for these partnerships, you know, is it consistent with our mission, vision, values? We think it is, or does this serve the best interest of our customers? You might ask, what's in it for TBWD? I mean, obviously, there's some money changing hands, but this really provides a growth opportunity for our staff. They get to learn a new system. They get to kind of play a different role than maybe they do here. You know, our, our person that's designated as the, the DRC and, and kind of the, the operations manager, you know, this gives them a little bit of a stretch assignment to be in those roles. And then, of course, do we have the resources, expertise, all that to meet the requests? Yes, we do, in a, in a cost-effective manner. You know, this is a, a demonstration of economies of scale. You know, we can, we can flex ourselves fairly painlessly. Whereas for the city to, you know, bring on a new team, you know, they've, they've been challenged to do that. And are we in the best position to provide the services requested? We think we are, and it's been very successful. So with that, are there any questions about the work we've been doing, what's in the IGA, or anything else? Well, with that, here's staff's recommendation that, that the board adopt Resolution 14-24 to approve this intergovernmental agreement between Twelton Valley Water District and the City of North Plains for Water System Operational Support Services.
Do we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1424?
So moved. Seconded.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion passes. Thank you, Pete. And not seeing any other items on the agenda this evening. This could be our final meeting of the fiscal year 2023-24. Congratulations on an outstanding year, everybody. That is easy here to say, $100 million a couple of weeks ago there, Justin?
We actually received the proceeds Tuesday. This was the official closing, so.
It's got to be a nervous moment, sign your name to something like that.
Yeah, I signed everything on Friday, and I took pictures.